We have a bittersweet presentation to make this evening. Planning Commissioner Alice Green will be in the Department of the Planning Commission for personal reasons, slightly medically related and so forth. She's been on there for years, she's worked her tail off. The planning commission is not aware, the commission is appointed by the council, they work for nothing, they work very hard, they do diligence, they eat usually once a month, sometimes more, sometimes a little less, but they have to go, they normally go around and see what's going on, they study. They've got the wisdom of Solomon, where you've got a dispute between neighbors, we've had issues in the past where you've got retaining walls sliding down a mountain after earthquakes. The retaining wall is now still between two individuals, the wall falls down, who has to fix retaining wall? George Jackson is the Chair of the Planning Commission, he's out there now. We can have, you can give me ten different issues, we can write a book on them, and say, how would you rule with regard to disputes or interpretation of regulations or whatever? And Alice has been outstanding in the middle of doing that. One other thing about Alice, we have three hundred sixty acres of old old school that we're trying to develop in a responsible way, and we've had various meetings at the quarter of the regional authorities. Part of it was the Regional Urban Design Guidelines, and there were meetings after meetings after meetings after workshops after different things, voluntary, we got together, tried to find out what kind of development do we want to have across all the twenty-seven-thousand acres of old land, how do we put together some sort of plan, sort of all books, sort of integrated? Alice went to every one of those meetings, she was the only one, besides myself, I'm over there as a member, but Alice and I were the only ones there for, how many hours was that, Alice?
It was a day.
No, only hours, day after day after day after day. So we have, again, this is bittersweet because we're gonna miss Alice, she's been a stalwart, anchor for this community, working for the community. We put together a proclamation, least we can do, I'd like to present Elsky, come forward, she's on quetsers right now.
We have a proclamation appreciation of five years of dedicated service to the city of Delray Oaks by Alice Green. Whereas the planning commission serves an important public service by providing architectural review and planning review of private development projects in the city of Delray Oaks, and whereas Alice has served as a planning commissioner since 2013, and whereas Ms. Green's dedicated service was characterized by exceptional attention to detail and thoughtful application of the city's ordinances and relevant rules and regulations, always available in the helping ham, she was also the author of the Delray Oaks Chicken Ordinance, as well as the Delray Oaks Bee Ordinance. In other words, Alice is the expert in Delray Oaks on the birds and the bees.
That's in there?
That's just a side. Where she can always be depended upon, be present, in command of the subject matter, and focused on achieving the appropriate outcome in a timely fashion, and now therefore I may or may not be able to behalf of the City Council of the City of Delray Oaks to hereby acknowledge with deep appreciation, Alice Green's five years of commitment and highly professional service to the city of Delray Oaks. A witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Delray Oaks to be to fix this twenty-sixth day of June 2018. Alice, thank you.
Oh, my God.
Again, Alice, a thank for, just, a thank for all the service. You are one of the foundation of Delray Oaks, please, when you show up to a council meeting or planning commission or whatever, we'd like to see your smile.
Well, I'll be back when I feel better.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, now we have a presentation, the Seaside, I'm sorry, yes, George, George is Chair of the Planning Commission.
Just really quick, as Chair, I want to thank Alice and for the whole commission. She's been a great asset, we all look at something and it looks very good, and Alice will go, oh, on page, so-and-so, so paragraph. So she dots the, puts a dot in, crosses a T, so we want to thank her, and she will be missed.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the presentation by the Seaside Fire Department, we have Chief Dempsey's here, along with Seaside Captain Jason Solins. I believe Captain Solins can do the presentation.
Yes. Thanks, Mayor, and the City Council members. I'm here basically to give some information, we have fire season coming up, I know that fire season is becoming longer and longer, almost a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day-a-year situation, however, it's a good thing to just have those kind of items touched on once again for all the citizens, bring some information, and just touch on some of the learning stuff that is now out there. So to begin with, we have the not, reverse nine-one-one, so I think will let us know that that's out there, they contact via phone in specific areas. One of the things that's also an option is a website called alertmontereycounty.org, and that would allow citizens to go online and to sign up where they can input whatever means of communication they want, that they could be informed on potential hazards, police activity in the area, severe weather, and more, based upon their locations, so they could get things like text messages, voice calls, and/or emails. So that's out there, I have some information if any of you did like that, and it's an easy thing to get to. Moving on to fire safety, you know, fire safety is coming, we've all seen the brush up there, I'd like to bring up two recent activities, one was last year, I think most of all remember, the fire on Southbound Ridge Road that happened between all the different major cities, including Cal Fire, that was kept to a pretty small fire, and we're very glad to help that. But we had a situation within this month where we had potentially a shred of it, it was driving down, or being towed down, Kennyville Range, and a chain was parking and caught about four or five small spot fires along the road in just a few hundred feet from here, in dry grass, so it's out there, the tension's out there. I did bring some information, some literature's on the table out there, and it goes over things like, you know, what to do and how to basically care for your house. So some things to do are come up with a pan, a plan, and a backup plan, in case your plan that you, your first and foremost primary plan, has something that would keep you from doing it. In those plans, you want to include things like, what am I gonna do, make sure that your family knows, you know, what the plan is, things to grab, list, medications, how we're gonna deal with our animals, things like that, the essentials, we're not looking for anybody to grab everything that they think possibly would be the case, but we want essentials, and, you know, things that they might often at home think about. And then go on to defendable space, things that they can do for their home, for the neighbor's home, basically, which is, there are the dry brush and grasses, remove dead wood and dead trees from the area. There are brush appropriate, appropriate jurisdiction, in other words, if you've got a lot of acreage, you have, you know, a much easier time to do that, if you've got a small mountain, it's what's appropriate. Remove firewood storage that are in contact with home, clean roof and doors from leak buildup, that's a big one. And then remove landable items from underneath decks, so storage of those landable items. Like I said, I know it's a lot, I can't, you know, give you all the items that you could actually do, there's literature over there, and we're always here to give assistance if asked, and give information, information reduction.
Captain Solins, thank you very much. Any questions or comments by members of the council?
Just real quick, I hope that we can put a link to this website that you talked about on our, on our website.
Dr. Republic, any questions or comments by members of the public? Say none, again, Captain Solins, thank you very much. The literature's out there on the table, which you should walk out, grab some, take it home, and don't just grab it, take a look at it, it's some really good ideas on how to minimize your susceptibility to fire in your house, we don't have any houses burning in this regard. Again, thank you for taking, thank you. We did have a brief presentation by Mr. Bette Gatti, Introduction to Energy Markets, he had a minor burdency in his family, minor, not, not life threatening or whatever else, he won't be here this evening, he will be here tomorrow to give a bit of primer on Energy Markets, per se, as a foundation by which he will be hearing other presentations by Monterey County Power, Pile Power, and so forth, so that presentation will be tomorrow night, not this evening. Next, we go to staff reports, City Manager's report first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to recognize Seaside Fire, just a little bit, first of all, the trailer that was going down in 218 a couple of weeks ago, you know, we didn't know how it happened, but it started four or five little brush fires right here next door, our residential area, on Highway 218, and but for the quick action of a driver who happened to be a City of Monterey maintenance employee who stomped out the flames with his boots, and the rapid response of Seaside Fire to follow up to prevent the spread of any sparks or follow-on fire, we could have a really bad day, really, really bad day on the south side of our city. So I just want to thank Seaside Fire for being here, and for being at our City Open House, and being a part of Delray Oaks, so thanks very much, thank you. Mr. Mayor and the Council, I'm pleased to report that the street solar work was completed last week, Monday through Wednesday, on our planned streets, our residents worked with our city staff very well, to ensure that metal plates were removed for driveways, cars removed from the streets prior to the solar work being done in a very collaborative way. Karen and Kim answered many calls, asking specific questions about timing, parking, all in all, a well-executed project, thanks to excellent work between Kim, Karen, our Public Works employee Ron, our City Engineer Sherman, and a really good street construction company. Striping is underway this week, and will be re-stripped a month from now to finalize the project, pending council approval tonight, we'll be getting work on our next project, which will have two components, one in the late fall, and one in the spring of 2019. I attended an annual Association of Defense Communities Conference in Washington D.C. last week for meetings with Pentagon officials and congressional representatives and staff, it's helpful in understanding the current dynamics that may affect our military bases and by association, our city. A rack round or base realignment enclosure round is unlikely in our next year or two, however, there's still a threat from military services realigning missions without closing a base, so keeping those connections to D.C. with our community, I think, is vital. Tomorrow evening, staff will hold a public workshop on June 27th concerning joining a community choice aggregation, Monterey Bay Community Power, as well as Pile Power will each present, PG&E is not allowed to present due to the law. I will mention a few comments about solar choice program that PG&E offers, which the city has joined. The city has consultant Jim Phillips, who will also present pros and cons of CCAs. Following the workshop, we'll bring recommendations to council as soon as we're ready. Our Police Department discovered homeless in Camden on Sunday near the intersection of Southbound Ridge Road and General June Moore, in the Regional Parks District land at the corner of that street. One person was arrested for narcotics, and we're coordinating with the Regional Parks District to have that camp removed. Our Police Department held a public workshop on May 23rd about forming a Neighborhood Watch Program. Daniela Colbasso and other residents organized a Neighborhood Watch meeting on Sunday, June 24th, that was attended by city staff, Mayor Edlin, council member Lutell, and several planning commissioners, and many residents. Venue allowed for a dialogue between residents and the city officials about safety and security in our community. Daniela took names and discussed who might serve as block captains. Officer Kyle Baum is our point of contact for this excellent program, he's working on forming a really strong rapport with our residents. Residents are organizing the next meeting, which I believe Scott Donaldson, Mary Francis had previously offered to host. The support initiative continues to build momentum. The city held a very successful open house and energy fair on June 16th, ANFAG staff attended with laptops and printers in Old Town Hall, conducted home energy assessments. Three solar companies attended and showed their wares, police, fire, and Public Works participated in this terrific event. Due to a combination of factors, including pressing staff priorities such as our 18-19 budget, police consolidation, and implementation of our short-term rentals ordinance, as well as delays to our traffic engineering consultant, and the need to continue staff due diligence, we are delaying action on public enclosure of carbon, coordinating council to agenda as we're ready, potentially in the late fall. Our Public Works purchased a new commercial mower to replace our aging residential riding mower. The mower allows our Public Works staff to mow the entire park in a fraction of the time it took before, which allows us to react, reprioritize other workers to do other work. I want to thank the Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group for their $4,000 donation to that $6,500 new mower. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Excellent, Mr. Mayor. We had a couple of comments prior to the meeting starting about that some people can't hear the council, council members, so if you can't hear in the back, just raise your hand, and we'll try and speak a little louder, and for council members, fully microphone a little closer, so they can hear. First up, Councilmember Ollie.
Thank you. First of all, I'll mention, Dino mentioned the Neighborhood Watch Program, but not too many people in the room here right now, which is kind of a shame, because people aren't aware that we have a Home Watch Request Program here with the city, which is really unique. I've never heard of this before, but you know, in Delray Oaks, I can go on the internet, fill out a form, hand it to one of the clerks here in the office, and the police will come by and check their house, and I believe they do that on a daily basis. At least, I know, I feel very comfortable when I leave town, and I notify the city police force, that I'm gonna be out of town, and I know that they'll come by and check my house. As a matter of fact, I know that very well because I was talking with a neighbor, and she told me that one time when I was out of town, the police came by and wanted to know what she was doing, very close to our apartment, but it is a very good program, and you can have a sense of security when you're out of town. The Monterey Regional Waste Management District Board meeting was held this past Friday, I was out of town, but the board did pass the operating budget for this upcoming fiscal year, which begins July 1st. It also helped the public hearing on the closed tipping fee increases that may result in somewhere between one to four percent increase in our residential collection rates, so it shouldn't be too much of a burden. The staff recommended that increase in fees to help pay for capital projects that are mandated by the state or necessary for the long-term operation of the landfill. We're also considering issuing a revenue bonds to finance two large capital projects related to the landfill, the lining projects. I also attended the Monterey Wind Water Board meeting last night, the board was updated on the progress being made on the Pure Water Monterey Project, we also passed the budget for this next year. The main project, the main project for the Pure Water Project is on schedule, and moving close to budget, so that's good news. There is some problems with a pump facility, it's something to do with twenty pipelines that had to be put in the ground with cement, and the cement is not passing compression tests that are required, so there may be some relation to that particular part of the project, but the project overall is still pretty much on schedule. And the related pipeline project, if you've driven down General June Moore Road, in the area of the housing that was down there, the military housing, you see that the street was dug up for a while, and now they're patching that. The pipeline project is almost completed, so we're all ahead of schedule, and that's to bring the water from the purified, the purified water from the treatment facility in Marina to the seaside area for the injection. That's all I have for the board. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Councilmember Killman.
Thank you. Can you hear me in the back? All right, I attended the Seaside Sanitation Board meeting, and we approved the 2018-19 budget with the possibility of two amendments. Community Human Services Board meeting, we also approved the 2018-19 budget, and also we approved the new board officers for the coming year. I attended the Neighborhood Watch informational meeting sponsored by the Police Department, it was outstanding presentation by Chief Jeff, Commander Chris, Officer Kyle, and Officer Matt. The tour of the Police Department was very, very informative, they attended, seemed impressed by the entire evening. And Daniela Colbasso, who is spearheading this, gave an excellent presentation, and this is based on her previous experience, we were very fortunate to have her as a resident, and that she is so willing to help us and guide us. And the purpose of the Neighborhood Watch is to forge bonds with the Police Department, the neighbors, neighbors helping neighbors, and be an extra set of eyes, excuse me, and ears for the Police Department. The residents are encouraged to go barbecue, ice cream gatherings, or host some type of an open house, and this is a good opportunity to invite the Police Department, as well as the City Council. Also attended the Neighborhood Watch event on Robertson last Sunday, Daniela and Allison sponsored the block party. There were lots of good questions, and answers were provided by Chief Jeff, Officer Kyle, and City Manager Dino, it was a great event, and thanks Allison and Daniela for sponsoring this. I attended the DOI 2018 Memorial Day Service Ceremony, it was a very emotional and beautiful tribute to our services past and present, and fortunate, so fortunate to live in the U.S. where we have so many military carrying force. I also attended that DOI, the change of command ceremonies, we had Lieutenant Colonel Chris Walker, who was relinquishing his command to Lieutenant Colonel J.C. Derouche, they were both here at the last City Council meeting, and were introduced, and Colonel Walker and his group did a lot of hard work on Saturday toward the beautification of Delray Oaks, and we hope he enjoys his new assignment in Texas, and we're looking forward to working with J.C. Attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony at Seaside in celebration of their beautification of Broadway, it was a nice ceremony, and attended by many local residents. Debbie Hill of Town C, and a representative from Jimmy Panetta's office, as well as several leaders of the Seaside spoke. I don't know if any of you have traveled on Broadway, but it is really a pleasure, it's beautiful, and you don't have to stop at every corner, and we've done a nice job. The Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group, I was remiss in my thanks for helpers in the Ice Cream Social during the last meeting, there were two planning commissioners, neighbors who were of great help to us, Scott Donaldson and George Jackson, I guess I took them for granted because they're always there to do whatever is needed, my apologies, and thank you both of you. The meeting of the, okay, was, we discussed the planning of the upcoming city garage sale which will take place on July 28th, and I hope all of you have all your goodies ready to place right there. We also discussed the possibility of a new larger sink for Old Town Hall. Scott Donaldson and George Jackson will visit the shop at the, I don't know what the name is, but.
West Jan, West Coast.
Thank you. To look at one and to reduce the price, and any of you who know George and Scott, you know they've already done that, and they've saved hundreds of dollars, and thank you both so much. Now it will be between these two general city staff to install all of this. And the open house Town Hall Energy Fair was held, don't you, on June 16th, and the city's goal was for residents to learn about energy-saving measures. Those who attended seemed to really enjoy the event, and also the tacos, and beans, and the drinks, so it was a nice, nice affair. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor.
That's far out of the follow-up, but you did miss something, she was also at the ribbon-cutting for MST, I think you did. She's my alternate on the, on the board, so that was nice, thank you for coming, and yet we had tacos there, too. I think the tacos, you know, they're in pairings, as it happens, it's been a couple of days that we've just, we've had a lot of tacos this summer, anyway, it was really good. So I attended MST, yes, we approved our budget, we didn't have a lot going on because we had the ribbon-cutting going after that. I attended, I was on an ad hoc committee for the nominating committee, so I had the meet before, and also we had a legislative meeting before the MST meeting. I attended a meeting with Dino and Jerry and Michael Lamar at Peter Society this month, we met for about an hour and discussed some items, Southbound Ridge Road items. I attended the Energy Fair also, that was, unfortunately, there weren't a lot of people there, but you can still get solar if you want, there's plenty of, plenty of people that want your business. I'll be handing out flyers, there's a lot of people, I got my flyer for the garage sale, I'll be handing out flyers over on Quindale area probably this weekend, and I wanted to acknowledge Susan Woolen for doing a bunch of work out from her house on the Green Village area, and planting, not only removing all of the debris, all of the weeds, but she's planted some ice, some like ice plant type of stuff, and I'm happy to see that you're here, because I was gonna bring that up tonight anyway, so, yeah, she's been doing a lot, it's you, and I think somebody else has been.
My trip.
Yeah, helping, so it's another big improvement, and again, we continue to see citizens improving city properties surrounding them, and I think it's, it's getting contagious, so. And I couldn't tell when the next Neighborhood Watch meeting was.
Hasn't been set yet.
Hasn't been set yet, okay. I will be there, I was out of town at the last one, and I'm very interested in that. I saw Officer Kyle, who stopped and talked, so he's being proactive about, you know, being out there, and he was talking to other neighbors that were walking, so that was really good.
Thanks, Chris. Councilmember Bob.
Due to business travel, I wasn't able to attend this month's board meeting, so no items to report.
Okay, great. Busy month as usual, Pat, thanks for stealing my thunder.
Thank you.
This afternoon, as part of Delray's exercise program, I had to go walking, sledding, jogging, delivering flyers for the garage sale, Garage Sale George is in charge of that. Last time I checked Google, I wrote three cities, small cities in California that have citywide garage sales, we're one of them, it was George's idea of, what, about eighteen years ago, yeah, germinated into a citywide garage sale that turns the entire city into a parking lot, so thank you. I go on delivering flyers, I deliver some exact members. On July, I'm sorry, June 1st, attended the Monterey County Mayor's meeting in Carmel, a discussion ensued primarily about community choice aggregation, and they want a report back after we go through our nationations tomorrow with Dino, and it comes back before the council, whatever decision the council makes, once we're presented with all the information, the mayors want to find out exactly what's going on. What makes it interesting is our next meeting will be here in Delray Oaks, Antarp, so all the Monterey County mayors will be here, will have discussions about RCC and some other things going on there. On June 2nd, attended the Battle Midway Denriff, the neighborhood's graduate school, Congressman Penelope was there, he was very, very gracious, had some good discussions, as were the mayors of Monterey, Carmel. And Pat talked about the three 14th Air Training Squad from reception that Pat had to tell, Dino and I attended, won't go into that in more detail, Memorial Day Ceremony, Pat and I went to that, won't go into detail on that. Southbound Ridge Road meeting with Kristen and Dino and myself, won't go into that anymore. Though I'll note one of this, June 8th, had an all-day four-transition ad hoc committee study session with the Fourth Order Directors, we're basically still trying to figure out what's gonna go on with four when the sun sets in June 2020. There will be a joint power authority, there will be a large authority. Will it be a larger organization, smaller organization? We all do our own ways. It's, it's like untangling the cordial knot. We can't get the sword, so it's still going forward. It's taking a lot of time. It's been an entire day doing the study session. We had our board meeting after that where we approved the budget for 18 fiscal year 1819 and the capital improvement program, which includes the South Country Road. So there was an attempt to try and kill South Country Road, the fucking there and there. I was able to head that off the pass. It's still going, and it looks like we'll have this thing hopefully done by 2020 and before the contender goes away. Again, Delray Oaks Citizens Action Group meeting, we had that. Pat and I went to that along with City Manager and the Chief. Again, the DLI here is a commander's change of command. Pat went through that also. Thank you, Pat. Oh, and I, you're not going to believe this, but on June 13th, I'm the member of the Emergency Communications Policy Advisory Committee that basically oversees what should happen with the countywide emergency communications. It's a mess. We haven't had a meeting for a year because the powers that be within Monterey County don't want us to meet. They want to try and control things or whatever. Dino's on the actual committee that does the work. We're the ones that oversight. We don't do anything but oversee what they're doing, so we decided to legislate ourselves out of existence. Believe it or not, the government agency actually legislated itself out of existence. So we had our last meeting there, decided the city managers making the big bucks. Not that much, but they're the ones, they're the experts. They can make, not only make the recommendations, but make the decisions, and I think that's the best way to go. So one less committee that we have to go to and fund or whatever. On June 14th, attended the Coast Guard Station Monterey Change of Command. Commanding Officer Mark Reno, the Lieutenant General, to Lieutenant John Gaddy. Great ceremony, a lot of VIPs in the local area were there. Great, great support of the Coast Guard Station. And then you've heard about the Open House. Fantastic event. We only had nine people there in the city. We sent, we sent letters to every residence in the city. We put them on the post, the bulletin boards, the kiosks, website, and next door Delray Oaks. And almost 2,000 folks in Delray Oaks, we get nine people showing up for the Energy Fair. Well, I mean, it was professionally done. It was outstanding, but I guess people aren't that concerned about energy. And the Neighborhood Watch Block Party was, I think also was outstanding. There was food there, music, a lot of neighbors were coming around. It was just really, really well done. And encourage everybody in the future with Neighborhood Watch parties, please get together and go. And it might be worth it. Next, we have consent agenda. You've got seven, A, B, C, all the way down, a lot of, a lot of the nation there. Any member of the council wishing to pull any items for questioning or discussion? Same now, out in public, any members of public wishing to pull any items for questioning or discussion? Back to council, anything of motion?
Approved.
You have a motion approved.
Second.
We have a second for the discussion of the motion. All in favor, City Mayor saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Say aye. Motion territory management. It seems like we're going through this cursorally. What happens is each one of the council members meets with the city manager. They go in detail with all these items on here if you have any questions. The city manager and staff answer these questions beforehand and try and make it as efficient as possible, the meeting. In this case, there are no immediate problems whatsoever. Staff's going to have a standing job. Next, we have new business. First item is the consignment of the 2018, the 2019 budget. The city manager of the local district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to present to you the proposed draft budget for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Mr. Mayor and council, the 1819 budget is, represents $4,25,231 in expenditures, which is a 34% increase over last year's budget. The budget is financed by $4,574,584 revenues, which will generate a surplus of $549,353. The major changes, which I'll highlight here, actually before I go on, let me just take a quick second. The budget's been in the works, this more mainly for the public, for about three months and, but for the diligence of Ken Carvalho primarily, but also Karen and Roberto, our contract financial advisor. This wouldn't have happened. Hundreds of hours of work and then close collaboration with our council finance committee, Councilmember Buckley and Councilmember Young, who met iteratively with staff and provided thoughtful input that made the product better every time. And so the product of all of that is what's before you tonight. I just want to thank everyone for their, for their hard work. The main changes this year, Mayor and council, is that in the operating budget, we have an increase of approximately $300,000 in cannabis revenue and cannabis tax, as we did last year and we will for several years to come. We're treating cannabis tax with caution. It continues to be a very dynamic sector statewide. The regulatory framework is in flux. Competition at all echelons of the, of the supply chain continues, and, and so our businesses and, and our city will, will suffer from all of those factors. So while we continue to have it be a significant source of revenue for us, we continue to treat it as one-time money for use primarily as investment in public infrastructure, streets or other one-time expenditures, or to help us build our reserve. In addition to the cannabis tax, we have a $25,000 transient occupancy tax placeholder in the, in the budget this year. That's a placeholder based on your approval tonight of the second reading of our short-term rentals ordinance. We'll, we'll get a better sense of what that revenue stream will look like going forward as we, as we implement. On the expenditure side, we have the major increases, $100,000 increase in contractual services for planning and economic development consulting, given all of the activities underway with the city in terms of rural parcel, 17 acre parcel, and other planning efforts. We've got that planned for the budget. Separate from the operating budget, on the, on the capital improvement, revenue and expenditures, you just approved on the consent agenda, and thank you, an agreement with FANCY for $861,300, $861,300 one-time advance of Measure X funds. That will help fund a $1.2 million street reconstruction project. We've done the relatively expensive street work this year with the $175,000 paving that we've seen around the city. The $1.2 million will go to the cul-de-sacs along Portola and Quendale, all in need of total reconstruction, as well as place of Carlton Drive through the estates there where roadway is, is covered. I will pause there, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the public might have.
Yeah, I'd just make one comment. I've been in public service now almost 20 years, and all the agencies and organizations and JPAs and so I've been on, this is probably the most transparent budget I've ever seen. The way it's broken down, the way it's presented, there aren't any questions. When we came to this, people were on our forums. I like to try and find new holes or whatever else going and harass our city manager when I get a chance. And I'm looking at this, I'm going, wait a minute, we're just, and it's extremely well done. So again, it's not, we go with the city manager. We have a budget committee again, a council member, and a council member, Buckley, work their butts off and working with the city manager to put together the framework of what we're doing. And I think the fact that it involves delta revenues says an awful lot about the way the city's going. So with that, any, any questions or any, any questions on any items under this budget?
I'd just like to clarify for the public that the $861,300 one-time link, that will be lent to us as we spend now on the outside.
Any other questions? Out in the public, any questions or comments, members of the public? Same now, back to the council, anything of motion? No approval of the budget? The approval?
Second.
Any, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, City Mayor saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion territory management. Again, thank you very much for the hard work, Dennis, Mike, and Dino, and you and the staff with the, this is, this is far higher than the others. Next, we have approved JP agreement for RV storage with Monterey Airport District. Yeah, I try and come down just about every day to harass the city manager, and I think we've discussed this many, many, many times. This is not easy. It's very, very difficult. There are negotiations going between the airport district and our staff, led by Dino there, and this is the agreement that we got thus far. It's been going through the, the, thank you, Mayor.
Mayor and council, I'm pleased to bring before you tonight a joint powers authorities agreement, largely in a contractual form between the airport district and the city, to establish a RV storage facility on airport property that will be leased by the city. Construction costs will be, for the new facility, will be borne by the airport and then recaptured through, through, excuse me, revenues from, from the spaces inside the, the new storage area. The agreement will allow us to notice our tenants and ultimately move them over the next 60 days and, and free up this, this space here, the city space, which we look forward to engaging with the council and the public on, on use going forward. The agreement envisions potential expansion into other areas, which is why we framed it the way we have, as a joint powers agreement. As you know, we share a significant boundary with the airport and significant overlapping interests, and police services is the, the next large component that we're, that we're working on. If we're able to reach agreement, I look forward to bringing that to you for, for decision. Chief Point's been, been doing unbelievable work on that agreement on our behalf and the airport's behalf. And so that's, that's the reason for the JPA framework for, for this agreement. The revenue share is described below. Essentially, the, the city retains the revenue stream while, while moving and bringing up the, the space next to the, to the city. I know that the council and, and the public has been keen to, to effect this move, and I'm pleased to bring this before you. Happy to answer any questions.
This is great. Can you imagine when those neighbors are gone, will no longer be the parking lot, RV parking, used car parking lot city? Will I say our city hall, the beautiful extension of the park and whatever else in the council and the public besides staff down there? This gives a huge increase in the visibility of our city. Any, any questions or comments, members of the council?
I wanted that RV first, so I moved here. I moved here and it's like, this has got to go. So I'm extremely excited. I think it's going to, aesthetically, it's going to make this city look really nice. So I'm, I'm extremely excited about this.
Yeah, I just also wanted to acknowledge the cooperation that we've received in working on this with the airport district. That involves meetings with myself and Vice Mayor, with members of their board, and it's been very cooperative, they've been anxious to work with us, and I'm just pleased that we're moving on this line. I think it's a good thing for the city.
Again, thanks for your reference and for your efforts. Well done. Councilor Paul, any questions or comments, members of the public? Back to the council, I'm hoping to down the road, maybe with our kids or grandkids, and will not be the Monterey Peninsula Regional Airport. It will be the Delray Oaks. We can integrate the airport, and there are advantages for the airport to be associated with the city and not just being independent. So entertain a motion. Coming back to the council. Okay, so the, the motion would be to authorize city manager to enter into a joint powers of authority agreement with the Monterey Peninsula Airport District.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, City Mayor saying aye. Anybody opposed? The third unanimous agreement?
I abstained.
Okay, so we have one abstention. Four ayes and one abstention. Good. Next, we have public comment period. Any member of the public may address the council's, any item. You've got three minutes. Please state your name of where you're from, if you would, just for the, the record.
My name is Ruth Ann Curran, so Carlton Drive. And I was under the impression that we were going to have the outcome of the traffic, the, what do you call it?
Traffic commie.
Commie, the traffic commie. And I did not look on the agenda, so I wouldn't know we would not have had it tonight. Now, there were people here that's already left that had the understanding we were going to have it. Now, what I want to know is last week, or last month, we were supposed to have it, and it was postponed. And the meeting before last meeting, we were supposed to have it, and they postponed it. Now, I want to know when we're going to have the finalization of that. And another thing I want to know, the lady who was standing next to me showed me on her iPhone that the traffic has already been resolved. She showed me right on her iPhone where they've already decided they're not going to close the Delray Oaks, I mean, the Carlton Drive. Now, I kind of like to know what's going on. Are we going to have next meeting a finalization on that? On the traffic commie? Wasn't there supposed to be somebody who's going to study it and then tell us about it?
Any other questions? I mean, is that, is that what you were questioning?
Yes.
Okay, city manager will answer.
Thank you.
Sure.
We're not ready to answer the question. We're not ready to answer the question. We anticipate bringing it back in the, in the fall.
Okay.
That's the answer. There's a lot of things going on in the city right now, as per our, we've got, we've got one city manager and two staff members. It's a matter of trying to juggle between the airport and all the other things that are going on. So we'll get to it sometime, hopefully, in the fall. Any other, any other comments, my, yes, now, please step forward.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jose Anzoni, and I live in Upper Seaside. I have not been part of all that's gone on, and I'm really sad to see what's gone on between the two communities and pretty new to the area. Been here about two and a half years. I understand that it's going to scale up at this point. I would encourage, you know, some reports and some data behind the decisions that are made going forward. I know personally that my traffic patterns have changed. Now that Broadway is open and Little Vias been better at this point as well, and I'm curious to whether that's impacted what's going on. I know that, you know, I certainly understand people had to find other ways while those things were going on, and I do understand that some people will still use that. So I would really encourage the council to put some numbers behind what they do, do some traffic studies, things of that nature. And maybe you've already done that, again, and followed what's going on, and I just hope that we can get along as two, two cities in this beautiful community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Same now, public comment period closed. Thank you for those public comments, really initial. We have no correspondence. We will be going to close session as permitted by Governor Code 54956. Sec, council committees, general, a close session to consider specific matters for litigation, personal, or labor, or real property negotiations. Closed session topics, there will be an update on anticipated litigation, significant exposure to, and initiation litigation under Code Section 54956.9, Subparagraph P, Subparagraph 2. There'll be one case. Before we go into close session, is any member of the public wishing to provide a public comment on this item we'll be discussing in the close session? Same now, we will be adjourning right now, and then we'll be joining once the council's meeting is ready. Again, thanks for showing up. Beautiful day out there. Enjoy living in God's country and loving the land right now. Delray Oaks meeting and session, and our, our city attorney will report out.
Thank you, Mayor. A status report was given to council regarding an anticipated litigation matter, but no court will act on it.
Thank you very much, and you're adjourning.